Welcome to the June 24, 2019 meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. Per the open meeting law, we ask that anybody in this meeting, recording this meeting, seeing none, can we all stand for the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. We have a joint meeting tonight with the Auburn Board of Library Trustees, and I'll turn it over to you to open your meeting, please.
Okay. I can call our meeting to order now. The business for tonight's meeting is to provide a nomination for the open seat in the Board of Trustees. There were five applicants that completed the Town of Auburn Board Committee application. Four of those applicants requested interview appointments that were scheduled for our meeting on May 20. One of the applicants emailed the evening of the interviews that she needed to withdraw from consideration for personal reasons. The three other candidates were interviewed at our meeting. The same questions were asked of each candidate regarding their interest in serving the community, the library, and their thoughts about the role of the library in the community, what special skills they had or talents that they could bring to the Board, questions about technology at the library, and their use of the Auburn Public Library. After the interviews, the Board of Trustees had a discussion about the ways in which each applicant could provide help in the work of the Board of Trustees. Because we did not know that the fourth applicant was not going to be at the meeting and concerned we might need to interview that applicant, we delayed our vote until our 6:00 PM meeting tonight. Would you like to know who we've nominated?
Yes, would you please, just continue if you would, please.
For the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees vacancy, we are nominating Mary DeCoursey.
And you've had your regular meetings, and this is what you've determined?
Yes.
Okay. Have any of your Board members got any other questions before we get started from our side?
Does anyone?
All right, I'll turn it over to the Board and see if there's any questions, comments? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the privilege of attending the meeting when they held interviews at the library that evening. It was an open meeting, and I'll tell you, we had some pretty amazing candidates. We would be lucky to have any one of them. I know Ms. DeCoursey was a finalist last year, and I fully support her nomination, but I would encourage the other nominees who filled out their applications. I know one of them checked off that she would be willing to serve on another Board of Commission, Board of Commission, and I'll tell you, I was wowed by all three. So, thank you for allowing us to view your meeting, and Ms. DeCoursey has my full support.
Okay. Has anybody got anything else? I'm taking, Mrs. Goodrich. I guess at this point, if there's no further questions or comments, then we can take a vote, and I believe you can take a vote with your Board, and I will take a vote with our Board.
Okay. So, I did nominate Mary DeCoursey. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Okay. To the Board, Mary DeCoursey has been nominated by the Board Trustees. Is there any comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we concur with the nomination. Second.
Okay. The nomination's been concurred with. Is there any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Mary DeCoursey, thank you very much, and best of luck, and thank you for coming in tonight. Okay. Yes, let's see. Okay, the next thing we have on the agenda for tonight is public comments. Thank you, Sharon. I'm not quite sure of what I have here in front of me.
My name is Wayne Page. I requested to be up on citizen comment to say something about Ann Brooks and Mike Rabidu. They had passed away, and I would like to make a couple comments.
Okay, thank you. I just, I didn't recognize the writing on it, so I just was curious as to what that was. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Page.
Well, first of all, I would start with Mike Rabidu, who has done a lot for this town. He'd had a very vocal voice. I understand that some of the Board of Selectmen and the town man didn't get along with him, but he had his heart into it, like a lot of us do. And we don't always tend to agree one way or the other, but that's the facts of life. And I think he was a man that died too soon, that could have done a lot more good for this town if people could have put their things aside and worked together. I know it couldn't happen, but still, he is a man that died too soon by somebody that was on drugs, driving a car, hit them on, straight on, and killed Mike Rabidu. And I just wanted to say, he's a man that died too young. And I would like to move on. Well, I'll just say one more thing. He was very, very tight with his family. Unbelievable. You couldn't ask for a better father as far as his children and his wife went. You can ask them, you can see it even in their faces today. And I'll let that go now. I would like to turn my focus onto Ann Brooks. This is a lady that I have grown to love. I have known Ann many, many, many years. I couldn't even tell you how long ago it was. It's been that long. This woman always cared about people. She didn't care about politics, she didn't care about race, she didn't care about anything. She would go without and give to others before she would give to herself. I know she has overwhelmingly got support from everybody around, but I just want to let you know, as a town resident of Auburn, I've grown to love Ann, and she has done so many things through the government, even regular people. She didn't care what political party or anything you affiliated with. She just cared. Even her last days, she cared. She was still worried about people. And I can't even say anymore. I think I'm just gonna have to stop now while I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page, for your comments. Appreciate that. Next thing we have is we have, under public hearings and presentations, Eastland Partners for the proposed multifamily workforce development, and that's the reserve at Ashworth Hill on Blaker Street. Can I have representatives come up, please? Ms. Jacobson, please.
Through the Chair, thank you. Just to remind the Board and tell the public why we've asked Eastland Partners to come in tonight. As you know, I had a recent meeting, they had come in and given a presentation on their proposed project on Blaker Street. As a result, the Board had some questions that evening that Eastland Partners did answer. They had a couple of questions that they were going to get back to you on. I did send the information to you once I got that, but wanted to share it with the public as well. Also, you had received a letter from a resident with several questions. I extracted the questions from that letter and sent those questions to Eastland Partners and asked them to look into this and get back and respond to that resident's concerns here this evening. I did not share the whole letter with the resident, but that letter is in your packet. So, this evening, I believe they're going to be talking about responses to some of the questions that have come up, and any additional questions that you may have. Our overall intent is to have Eastland Partners come back again in July, at your July meeting. Again, ready to answer additional questions that may come up tonight, that they can't answer on the spot tonight, that we want to give more thoughtful responses to, or we may get additional questions from residents that we want to have the opportunity to answer. So, they have this evening on the questions we've received to date, plenty of opportunities to ask other questions, including between now and the next meeting in July 15. And then, I believe, thinking, the thinking was to come back in in July also and explain to the Board at that time, the LIH process, the local initiative, the LIH process, local initiative process, under a so-called friendly 40B. What is the Board's requirement? How does it work? So, I think that would be the next meeting. And then, we don't want to rush it, but we're thinking maybe in August, or perhaps the first meeting in September, the Board at that point have had several meetings under their belt and would feel comfortable taking a vote to move forward on the LIH or not. So, that's kind of the layout of what we were looking at for timing. If the Board would like us to look at something different, please tell me. That was just our recommendation. And this evening, we did provide in your packet some of the written responses that Clay had given to me this afternoon, but he's gonna verbally explain it tonight. But that way, you'll have it in your packets for future reference should you need to go back. We also put copies in your packets of prior, the prior presentation and the prior explanation, again, because we weren't sure you'd have it in your packet tonight, because those weren't on the agenda, but they're in here should you need to go back and reference it. So, Logan Huffman, as you know, is the President, and Clay Williams has, the planner, has been working with us to provide feedback and answers to any questions that we've had as well. So, Mr. Chairman, if I can turn it over to the developers to respond.
Yes, would you please? Mr. Chairman and the Board, here to respond to some of the questions that we had from a resident. Starting right off of it, the methodology used was in question here, and like I said before, all of my sources with a brief explanation are listed in the annotated bibliography. So, there are links to different articles and data points for those who would want to review them. We, our main source was this company, E-Consult Solutions. They do demographic multipliers, which is basically a way to forecast what kind of residents and how many residents would move into a new housing unit. I also used census data from 2016 to arrive at some of my figures, and then also, our traffic study that we had completed was another big source. And after that, it is just kind of regular rules and regulations that come along with new development. So, moving on to the second question here, talking about the number of schoolchildren. The resident was concerned about the average size of a household in Auburn, which was noted at 2.47 people. The average home in Auburn is single-family, and because we are proposing apartments, multifamily rental housing, the households do tend to be a little bit smaller, so that's kind of one place to start out. Using E-Consult Solutions for single-family homes, they would actually project 2.87 people, so some of the numbers might actually be higher. But moving forward on to school-aged children, the way that we arrived at this number was taking what's called a demographic multiplier, which is based on reports and data that has been brought together by this company. They are a company who isn't either for or against housing. They simply provide data. That's what they do, and that's what they have done. So, we take this school-aged children multiplier, which I refer to as SAC here, and you multiply that by the number of homes we are proposing. So, memory serves me right, our multiplier was about 1.75 school-aged children per unit in a, yeah, .1, excuse me, in a large multifamily housing with more than five units. If you refer back to the presentation, you can see these numbers in front of you. Since there are some limitations here, the multipliers also do break it down per bedroom, so I used a per-bedroom multiplier as well, and since that does not discriminate between housing types, so whether it was a three-bedroom, single-family house, duplex, or larger apartment building, that ended up with a higher number. So, averaging those two together is how I got to my projection of 53 school-aged children. Moving forward on to issues with traffic, the resident was concerned that there are 1.25 cars per household in Auburn existing. So, if you take that number and multiply it by 250, you end up with 312 and a half extra vehicles and vehicle trips. Traffic engineering is an incredibly complicated discipline. Our traffic engineer who prepared this study has over 30 years' experience. He is fully registered and licensed, and when you look back at the traffic study, which I understand they can be hard to read and understand, during the PM peak hour, which is the busiest hour in the evening, which would be when people are returning home from work sometime usually between 5:30 PM and 6:30 PM, 174 new vehicle trips are forecasted within that hour. So, if you divide that by 60, you get just about three extra cars per minute, two of which would be going into the reserve, and one of which would be going out. And like I said, this is based on the Institute of Traffic Engineering manual that gets regularly updated to make sure that forecasts are correct. The next question concerns our pre-development activities on the site now with earth removal and the blasting that's going on. I'd like to remind the Board that we have a fully approved five-lot subdivision, and we have been within our rights and following that plan throughout this process. The last question that came up was concerning the number of parking spaces at the development. Like I had said, we are providing 1.7 open-air parking spaces, so within a parking lot, there will be some additional covered spaces in a garage that a resident could rent if they wish to do so. So, overall, we're offering 1.9 spots per unit, which is something that is a number that comes from rules and regulations within the 40B process. Moving forward from the residents' questions, going on to some of the information that we did not have for you last meeting, in this packet, I have the building breakdowns with the units and their sizes. So, starting off with the size, our one-bedroom units are gonna be 730 square feet. Two-bedrooms would be just over 1,000 at 1,025 square feet, and then the three-bedroom units would be at 1,285. The corresponding rents are right above it for market-rate units, so those that aren't deemed affordable or at a reduced rate are $1,700 a month for a one-bedroom, 2,000 for a two-bedroom, and 2,300 for the three-bedroom units, and this is based on a comparable unit study through the surrounding area. These still could be subject to change. It's a preliminary estimate right now for where we are in the project. The affordable unit rents obviously are lower. A one-bedroom would come in at $1,316 without utilities. The two-bedroom would be 1,418, and then the three-bedroom would be 1,530. And the way a rent is determined for an affordable unit is a metric of this affordability level. So, you take our 80% of the area median income, which is what these offers will be, or these units will be offered at, excuse me, and you divide that into monthly income for a resident. And housing is deemed affordable if a resident is paying 30% or less than their monthly income for rent. So, that's where those numbers come from. And then, this chart on the right, which got a little bit cut off, at least on my copy, shows the different building types in which would have more three-bedroom, two-bedroom, and one-bedroom units. And that answers all the previous questions that we've received, and I guess I'll open it back up to you for any further questions, either from you or from the public.
Okay. First off, Logan, have you got anything you want to add to it that...
Well, Clay here was a little fast with things, and if any of the questions, if we didn't explain them well, so you were, you know, a little lost on what we were trying, you know, what we were trying to do. It's just, you know, we wanted to fairly answer the residents' questions and, you know, and direct more, you know, to the Board, I think, is what you get from what Clay provided, I think, then we'd kind of elaborate on that, and I think it'll become more clear if some of those kind of answers were a little bit vague without, you know, reading the whole letter.
Okay. Now, I'll turn it over to the Board. Is there any questions, comments from any members? Yeah, Mr. Bertham.
Through the Chair, just some clarification. So, on the affordable units without utilities, so water, electric, cable, what other, is it electric heat, are the units electric heat?
It, the heat will be electric, because there's no gas in the area, but it will be electric heat pumps, which is some of the most efficient, you know, systems that are out there, you know, today.
And so, the 1,700, 2,000, 2,300, those are all-inclusive, or are they triple-net?
For the market, those would be, utilities would be on top of that.
So, it'd be plus, okay? Okay. Well, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It sounds like this is going to be a planning board issue, but I've heard from a couple residents as well on this. On the second page, the alleged running an illegal stone quarry. I know you went over it fairly quickly. I'm hearing that, you know, the number of trucks that are in and out of that lot a day, up to eight an hour. Is this something that was specifically addressed at the planning board? And if there is an issue, would it be proper through the Chairman's wise to refer them back to the planning board if there are issues?
The, we went through the full permit process with the planning board. Part of that process is the design review, the engineering of the site, all of which included the, you know, the cuts and fills, the reshaping of the site. All of those things were discussed. The information was sent out to the Board's third-party reviewer, which is Graves Engineering, went back and forth, you know, for months. You know, everything was worked through, you know, the, you know, always the quantity of material that was gonna need to be removed. It was never hidden. It's right on the page, or right on the plans of what, you know, was going to happen.
Just if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to follow-up questions to that, then. So, it was, I just want to be clear, it was discussed with the planning board at that time, specifically that you would be blasting and removing this ledge and having these truckloads in and out?
Right. The planning board was clearly aware that there was ledge on the site. It was evident. I mean, you could see it at the surface.
Okay. So, a resident was concerned with this, I can easily refer them back to the planning board. And also, just one last question, is this blasting and removal of this ledge, broken-up ledge and stuff, is this only happening on the approved planning board site, or has it expanded into the proposed 40B site?
What we know right now is the, if I was gonna say percentages, I would say 80% of blasting and that sort of thing is done with this first part. There will be some going forward, but as the way the site works, it can get up to the top of the hill, as we would say it in the excavation game, there's more dirt. So, it's much deeper what rock and ledge that does exist is, you know, it's much deeper, so there'll be, you know, much less going forward. In addition, we believe right now that we're probably two to three weeks, but from being completely finished with that portion of the work. And at that time, you know, kind of all of that will cease, and we will, we will move to installation of the sewer, water, and drain, the utilities, you know, for the street, and actually, you know, constructing the new street itself.
So, just one more, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification. So, I'm sure you know that we answer to our constituents, and it depends on where we send them, if it doesn't fall under us. So, I just want to be clear, that any of this blasting and removal has been on the property that has a site plan approval from the planning board. It's not the 40B project, so we would refer them back to the planning board and have them look at that site plan approval. You said it appears that 80% of it, are you saying that there's 20% that's been on the other site that is...
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was projecting in the future, I thought you were asking, as we move forward and receive, you know, permits and approvals to develop the 40B development, of the total that will be done on both, I would say roughly 80% has already been done on our road in front. We've done nothing on the site that will be the 40B portion, but we, we don't believe there's gonna be nearly as much rock in that area.
And I appreciate that. So, there appears to be some conflicting information, so it's easy enough to go back to the site plan approval to check what the planning board approved to address this issue, which I will refer the two residents who contacted me about this back to either the Town Planner or the planning board. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Has anybody got anything else? Yes, Mr. Littlebitty.
Through the Chair. On that same question from the resident as regard to the blast site, the resident had complained about, or had said that there might be inflation as to how many, how much traffic is in the area due to the trucks. I was wondering if there's any credibility to that, or what your response would be to that. I don't see a response here as to whether or not the traffic created from the trucks would have accounted for an increase, or, I'm just wondering what your response is to that section of the question.
The, the traffic counts that were compiled were done months ago before this work started. And I could get a count, I think it's been said that while this work has been going on, there has been as many as eight trucks leaving the site per hour. You know, I'm not gonna argue that, and there, you know, there has been a fair amount of material leave. It's just, you know, in our work and the normal course of the business.
That's all I have.
Okay. Is there anything else? Have you got anything else versus the comments that, or questions that were asked here?
Not at this point. I just think if the public has anything...
Turn it over to any of Butters' residents in the area. Has anybody got any questions or comments? Okay. Would you please, yeah, go up to the podium, please? Identify yourself.
Yes, sir. Mark Lindblum, One Eames Drive. So, again, I would, I would say, by the way, Ms. Jacobson, Land Board, thank you very much. Please contact the planning board. You can go back to some of the meetings back on March 26, and also a few other, and then also shortly thereafter, I can give it to you in two seconds. Review some of the notes from back there, that they seem to have a much different answer compared to what was just given, in terms of the amount, in terms of how much has been going on, in terms of prior approval. So, March 26, planning board meeting, approximately 40 minutes into it. Bill Coyle gives his discussion on all the material and not the knowledge of the amount of material that was leaving on April 23, at approximately 30 minutes into it. It goes on for about 40 minutes, about 40 minutes. They have the discussion between Eastland Builders and the planning board on various questions on the amount of material moved, the blasting, the amount of vehicles, the acknowledgement that the residents knew, the fact that we were supposedly aware that there would be a quarrying operation going on, and please, planning, so I... And please, planning, Huffman and members, please drive by. Go take a look and see what supposed, what a four-lot subdivision, 22 months into it, looks like for four houses plus a single family. And see what we have been as neighbors have been going looking for. Please drive down Albert Street. That was head trees removed, shrug re-removed, everything all cleared out, again, 22 months ago. It started, was approved on September 17th, 2017, and probably early October is when the tree removals started and the excavation started going into the, to the four residents on Albert Street. You drive by there now, all you have now is still gravel that comes four feet in, three, four feet into their road. You have waddles still, there's been no, we've asked multiple times, even if you're not done yet, please at least give these people their yard back temporarily, so at least they are not left with gravel, waddles and states while this project has been going on now for many months.
Excuse me, Mr. Lindblum, has, have you attended any of the planning board meetings?
Sir, was here last time, sir.
You were there the last time. Were these concerns brought to them?
We've had these discussions with the planning board, sir.
Okay.
But there was no discussion, there was no public discussion at the last meeting approximately six weeks ago.
Okay. And Eastland Partners was also at that meeting?
Yes, sir.
And discussion?
Here, giving the meeting, yes, sir.
Okay. So can I stop you right there and can I turn this over to Eastland and let them, you know, talk about what you've just discussed here?
Sure.
Please.
I have done my research for exactly what meeting it was, but we went back in on one of these meetings, March or April, because there was a concern that had been raised, and I don't want to get too deep in the woods, but, but when you have rock excavation, you know it's under the ground, but you can't see it until you dig it up. And what we tried to do, because going back when we were in the approval process, we did discuss the quantity that there were going to be a lot of trucks, a lot leaving the site. What we tried to do, and ultimately, shame on us for trying to do something good, on the hillside slope, as the road, the new road goes up, we did a process what's called pre-splitting. And you've seen it in different places, you see it out on the turnpike and anywhere where there's like rock faces that go up pretty much straight up. What you do is essentially drill and you pre-split. What that does is, is you have, if you have a situation where if our plan as it was approved had a slope like this, if you will, a triangle. So everything within this triangle has to be removed per the way the plan was approved. What we tried to do, and we've done it many times in the past, is make this steeper ledge slope. It would have eliminated probably 30% or more of the material that's had to leave the site. But with all due respect, the, Bill Coyle and the Public Works, as my understanding, started getting calls because people were complaining, saying that a deer in the woods was probably going to fall off of that slope. So we went back to the meeting, we talked, he could review the minutes. I shared with the board that, you know, we're happy to put it back and take the rest of the material out. The, the board that night kind of took it under advisement, but we looked at it and with what we're trying to do here and all, we decided, let's just go back, build it to the plan, take the rest of the material out. And that's what we've, what we've been doing to bring it to what was approved, which was a two-to-one slope. So what we did is we tried to minimize the amount of material that was going to have to leave and kind of got, you know, ourself in trouble, if you will, because of that. The next thing as far as on Albert Street, Albert Street's not finished. We talked about it briefly when we were here the last time. And the irony, if you remember, when we finished, the representative from the power company was here to get approval from your board to move some poles. The only reason that street is not 100% done is because we've been waiting for the power company, because until a couple months ago, they were talking about allowing us to put the power underground. And since come back and said you can't do that. The minute those poles are moved, we'll have the work done on that street in two weeks. I mean, it, we would have done it a long time ago. But I'm sure as a board, you've run into this a lot of times, that these poles are left standing, you know, for months and months. So that's the reason Albert Street's not completely finished.
Thank you. Well, I guess from what I'm hearing right now, some of these concerns of the residents through the planning board, some of the concerns have been voiced to them. This board here can't actually make a decision one way or another until the project has gotten to a point where it's coming to us. It's still in the process and it's something that you'd have to probably take up with the planning board instead of trying to discuss it here tonight and bring it through. Is that something we can approach the planning board with and tell them that there's been?
The neighbors would have to.
Okay. All right. So, yes.
Through the Chair, if I may, when I checked with the town planner the other day, there is no, because someone had asked me if they're going back to the planning board. At this point, they're not on the schedule to go back to the planning board, is my understanding, because they're in full compliance with the plan as approved by the planning board. If any part of that, if they're not in compliance, then they would have to go back to the planning board, but right now they're not.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Lindblum. Thank you for coming in and voicing your concerns. And again, this is not a place where we can make any decisions tonight, one way or another. We've heard what you've got, and if there's anything further, just please approach the planning board and let them know exactly what is going on, what your concerns are, and they can address it with Eastland Partners. But thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Yes, please. Would you identify yourself, please?
Thank you for holding this meeting and for allowing us to talk. I'm Eileen Lasire from 11 Blaker Street in Auburn, so I'm right at the intersection of Albert and Blaker Street. Now, many times tonight I've heard that the plan was approved, and it was approved. It has gone through so many renditions since then and never been approved again by the planning board. So the initial one was approved, but what they have done is not what was approved by the planning board. And at the last meeting, they were talking, they were disrespectful to the planning board, and the planning board called them on that. They have not used the protocol that's in place to get these things done. Some of the things I'm sure have to be done to get anything put in place there and done safely, but they haven't used the right process and alienated a lot of us in the process. Now, a lot of the questions you asked were questions that I had put forth as far as what would happen with the 250 units. I'm assuming that those people are going to have visitors. How is that factored into the figuring of the traffic patterns? That road is, both those roads have a lot of wear and tear on them already for very little traffic. So what does that mean as far as the roads go? I still don't understand how 250 units of housing would produce just 52 school-aged children. It just doesn't make sense logistically. One of the things that has been a major concern is one of my neighbors that's closest to the site has been to the doctors because he can't breathe. And that was brought to the attention of Eastland, and so they had to bring water trucks into use for when they were doing the grinding, finer grinding of the stones. And the water truck did sit there. I don't believe it was ever used. So I'm a little skeptical about what I'm hearing as far as the proposals go and the figures that are being presented. And I would relish going back to the planning board and went to many, many meetings there. And it's just not the way they say it is. It didn't happen that way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lasire. Comments, please?
Mr. Chairman, the first thing, the, the traffic numbers that are used take into account essentially everything, that, you know, your visitors, you know, generally how much, you know, how many times a household would like go to the grocery store and all of those, you know, kind of different things. They come up with these multipliers, you know, looking at real life. So those types of things are accounted for, so you get the big picture, because it wouldn't be right, you know, if, if in a household, I don't remember the number exactly, but I think it talks about like roughly seven trips per apartment per day in a 24-hour period. Well, arguably, a trip being out is one and in being one. So that, if you think of it, you know, if, if, we could also say it's two trips. You go to work and you come home from work and you go to the grocery store before you come home. But it isn't counted that way. It takes into account that, you know, people make other trips, they go to the pharmacy, they go out at night to, you know, serve on boards, they do all the normal things that people do. So all of the numbers that are used by the traffic engineers manuals account for that. Next thing, it's the same with the schoolchildren. As Clay's work to articulate, we reached out and we found sources that are unbiased. They don't care. They don't know anything about Auburn, Massachusetts. They don't know anything about us. They collect data and they collect it nationally, all over the country, everywhere. This is what they do. And we take their raw data, which again is, is, this is what you can expect for this kind of use. And those are the numbers that we've used in this. So it is specific to the type of housing, as Clay was saying earlier. You know, Auburn is predominantly single-family homes. And if you look at even the charts, as he was saying, it shows you, there's typically more children live in a single-family home per, you know, per home than in apartments. All of that has been taken into account here, you know, for our numbers, because, you know, we, we, number one, I guess we're, we're smart enough and experienced enough to know that these kind of questions will come up. And the last thing any of us want to do is to get into a back and forth that, well, I think this and, and, you know, they think that. We've tried to use fair, accurate data. We've also spent time with the Auburn School Department and their people, and my understanding, they've looked at the numbers, you know, as well. Thirdly, I don't know how to really, you know, address this broad statement that, you know, somebody's having problems breathing. I can tell you this, that there has been water on the site for dust mitigation since day one. There were a couple days where the guys running the equipment didn't have it running enough and there was, you know, because it varies. You know, today it may be really dry, tomorrow if it's raining, you know, all day, the next day they come back to work, you're not going to have the dust that you would have. So it had gotten, you know, away a couple days. But mind you, the closest point that my understanding that any of this work to a property line with a neighbor is still over 100 feet away and, you know, this, we've paid attention, you know, to the dust situation.
Okay. All right. Is anybody, board members got any questions or comments? Well, I guess it just in, oh, Mr. Jacobson, please.
Through the Chair, I just want to follow up on something. I did have a conversation with school superintendent, Dr. Mary Ellen Brunel. Also, as Mr. Huffman just mentioned, the school department had seen these numbers, they had looked at it, they provided some of the data for the analysis. And our finance CFO also looked at the numbers just to ensure that those were accurate as far as the cost. Dr. Brunel shared with me, and she said that I could share it with the board tonight, that the school committee has had conversations about this at one, if not two, of their recent meetings. And that while they, they have some cautious concerns about any number of additional schoolchildren, especially, you know, 53, it all depends on what grades those students are in as to what the impacts on the school department are going to be. And that's something that the developer can't project, that you don't know how old the children are that are going to move in there. If 53 school-aged children moved in and they were all in one grade, that's a problem. If 53 school-aged children moved into two or three grades, as the superintendent said, that could require an additional teacher or two, because they want to keep the student-teacher ratios where they have them and keep class sizes manageable. So it all depends on where those children come in. If they were all to come in somehow in the middle and high school, she said that they feel the school facilities can handle that type of an impact. The reality is, and what we all have to recognize, we won't know what that, how many children actually move in until this development is done and families start moving in. And it may or may not be a consistent number. Families may live there for two years and then leave, and another, another tenant could come in there. So we've asked the developer to do his best to give us an estimate based on industry data. Again, we wanted to make sure that data came back that was, it was from a neutral source, but the best that we have been able to ask is just give us an estimate so we can somehow do the planning. There's, we won't know. That number could be more. You know, some of the residents are absolutely right, it may not be 53. No one knows what that number's going to be. It could be less than that, it could be more than that. All we can get is the industry analysis. So that's what you have in front of you, the superintendent has seen it, school committee has seen it, they recognize the project's going forward regardless. So the reality again is, we will have to deal with whatever the impacts are, because we do have a project going in. You can't stop a project under state regulations for an impact on schools, nor an impact on, you know, some of the other impacts that we're discussing. We just can be educated about it, become aware of it, and start preparing for it. And also I point out, and I think the Chair did a good job of saying that, unfortunately, it's hard because there are two different issues going on here. We have the five-lot subdivision that's been approved by the planning board. Any questions, concerns, issues with that have to go to the planning board. I know our building commissioner has gone out a couple of times. If there's something, if there's a violation, Caleb is happy to go out and take a look at it, see if there actually is one. But there's two different issues here. We've got the five-lot subdivision, that is a planning board issue, it's, it's under the auspices of the planning board. What's before the Board of Selectmen this evening is a, ultimately a proposal for a 40B housing project of 250 units. It is similar, it is, some of the lots that you're using for the five-lot subdivisions, I believe one of those lots may be the part of the roadway into this.
Lot one would be the access.
But the other parts of it are all under the auspices of the planning board. So the board, just so the residents understand, what the board is trying to do tonight is learn about this project, understand the impacts, find out how we can work with the developer, if we can work with the developer to mitigate any of them if we identify them. Or does the project go forward without the board and without having any impact? Because either way, the project is moving forward. So it's a decision on how involved can the board get and how involved does the board want to get? And I think that's where the next meeting's going to be critical, because I think we need to understand what is the LIP project, how, what is the role of the board? What do we need to do? What do we need to look at? And what do they have to do? And trying to keep those two issues separate. Although I would encourage residents, as with any project, if you do see something, please, you know, don't hesitate to go back to the planning board, don't hesitate to contact our building commissioner, we're always happy to look at it. But recognizing we've really got two separate issues here that we need to keep separate. We need to keep the local initiative, the local housing project initiative on the one hand, and then the current issues, as Mrs. Goodrich pointed out, that are already with the planning board, to encourage people to go back to the planning board if it's related to a planning board approval of a site plan.
Well, I thank you for that. And I, to- And I, Clay and Logan, you brought it to us and were very blunt about it at our last meeting, that it is your property. You are able to do it as long as you meet the requirements of the Planning Board. And this project, I know, wouldn't have gone as far as it has without approval from the Planning Board. And step by step, if there are questions, there are concerns, I would just have residents approach the Selectmen's office, the Town Manager's office, and root those concerns and issues to the Planning Board and let them know exactly what's going on. Again, it's not something we can decide on here, we can hear it, we're learning as much as you are, we're not living there like you are, but we are learning. And as Ms. Jacobson said, that the next couple of meetings, you know, we are going to be in that position to decide, but we will want to hear a full report of where we are and how it's going to work. So, on that note, I guess we can't go any further than, is, any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Carpenter.
I was wondering, could we arrange a site visit of the property prior to the next meeting?
Love to. Just at your convenience, let us know whenever you'd like to schedule that.
We can work to set that up with the developer, with the board.
It might be better to do it on Saturday so that those of us who work can actually show up.
Okay, Mrs. Goodrich, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I know we've gone long, I just really feel the need to follow up on a couple of things that have been said. And I understand the role of the Board of Selectmen, I know what we're doing, we're having, you've come in for a hearing for us. And once you do that, it opens, it opens things up to public comment and public questions for us. At our last meeting, we had discussion on the impact on the schools. And I believe if we went back and looked at the tape, and I raise these questions, we were told that the impact would be spread across 12 grades with an average of 4.5 students in each grade. Now tonight, through Mrs. Jacobson, we're hearing that we can't estimate it. So my concern is that, we just put that on the table at the beginning. So we can't estimate the impact of what it will be for elementary schools. So that when the School Department and the Town Manager and the CFO are in the budget process, they may be looking, you know what, we need to put some money aside potentially for an additional second-grade teacher, potentially a second-grade third teacher. I'm not, I'm not opposed to this project, I don't have, you know, I'm not for it, I'm not opposed, I don't have strong feelings about it. But what I think is important is, if we don't have, if we can't say, this is fact-based information, like you have said, data based on industry standards, yet tonight we say, we can only estimate because we don't know the impact on each grade. Just say that, say it at the beginning. Say, we don't know what the impact on each grade is going to be, but based on industry standards, we can say the impact will be 53 students. And I think that we'll move, we'll move forward better in this, because I have, I have great concerns on the impact of the School Department budget as well. And if we need to be looking at additional positions for additional grade-two, grade-three teachers, grade-one teachers, because that's the impact this project will bring. Planning, prior planning prevents poor performance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Has anybody got anything else? Okay. Have you gentlemen got anything else? I think we've covered a lot of bases tonight, hoping that what's, information that was provided tonight, maybe generate some more questions. And as questions that come in, hopefully we'll get to, yeah, to the Town Manager through any of the residents, get into the Town Manager so that Eastland can get a hold of them. And we'll present them at the next meeting. And hopefully at that point, we'll be able to fine-tune it and know exactly what our position is and we'll go from there.
Right. Well, thank you so much, everyone, tonight for your time and all, and available for any questions and we're all going forward.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Good organization. All right. The next item we have, there are no communications, we have the Board of Selectmen general items, and it's the Board of and Committee Appointments and Reappointments. First one is the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that's under 6A. And we have potentially three candidates for one associate number C. And I understand there's two of them here tonight. And a third will be, was unable to attend tonight. So, let's see, I'm looking for, okay, no, I don't either, that's why I'm saying we have two here tonight. 6A. Okay. Why haven't I got a 6A here? Yes, please.
So you do have in your package here.
Oh, here it is, thank you.
6A. And these are for the two that are here this evening. The third candidate has not responded to our office as far as availability to come into the board. So right now, we've had communication with the two that are here.
Okay. Well, the first one we have tonight is Michael Marshall from 36 Appleton Road. Is he in attendance? Yes, please. Would you come up and sit at the counter with us?
Sure. How are you?
Great. Well, I guess, we'll have you introduce yourself and talk a little bit about you.
My name's Michael Marshall, I live at 36 Appleton Road. I actually just moved to Auburn about two months ago, I'm very excited to be here. My wife and I moved here in hopes of essentially being more a part of our community. We're coming from Somerville and are very happy to be in a place where we know our neighbors and actually have been inside some of their houses and aren't just faces on the street. So, excited to be here and thank you very much.
Okay. Has any members got any questions? Okay, I guess the first of what brought your attention to the Board of Appeals?
I work as an attorney, and so the Board of Appeals is obviously something that deals with reading, interpreting, and enforcing the laws for this town of Auburn. So it seems like a place where I could use the skills that I have to try to benefit the town and help out in a way that would be useful.
Now, you've got some background in law, and have you had a chance to see any of the appeals meetings? Have you attended any of the appeals meetings?
I have not yet. I definitely look forward to trying to do that, but I haven't yet, you know? We just moved in a few months ago, so we're still getting settled.
You're putting everything all in one basket here, I can see, thank you. Has any other board members got a question? Okay, well, we'll continue here then. Do you have any time constraints, any problems? You're saying you've just moved in and you are working? Okay, so.
I work full-time, but other than that, I make myself available. And even if there are meetings that happen during the week, I've been able to work pretty flexibly with my schedule at work.
Okay, so, yeah, the meetings are, you know, regularly scheduled so that, you know, you wouldn't have any problem attending any of them?
No, if I'm not mistaken, there are in the evenings on Thursdays or something like that, I wouldn't have any issues attending.
All right. Have you ever had a chance to do this kind of a thing before or anything that's similar to it? You have any similar experiences or special experiences or skills that'll help you with that?
So, I've never done zoning specifically. The company I work for is a cell phone tower company, so I've heard a lot about the zoning process, because that's obviously a major obstacle for the company that I work for. I share a organization with our zoning team and occasionally, you know, talk to them about the issues that are facing them. So, I do have a pretty general understanding of how it works and what the process is, public hearings and making sure that you comply with the law and all that stuff. I have not specifically had any opportunities to work in zoning, but I do have a sort of a general knowledge of how it works.
Okay. Well, as you understand, there are zoning bylaws and there are laws through the state that, you know, it's basically an educational process. Have you the ability and the time to be able to do that for the town?
Absolutely.
It is a very, very important aspect. I mean, that zoning board of appeals, and just as it says, it's an appeal, so if somebody doesn't agree with something, you come back and now you want to apply what there is to that. And you were able to, well, get educated on that and get going.
Absolutely.
Okay. Has anybody got anything else? Mr. Carpenter.
It's pretty unusual not to have the chairman of the committee with us, so, you know, this is for an associate position, you understand, that you only step in when a full board or somebody might have a conflict of interest, you understand that?
I understand, yeah.
But you are required, or it is strongly desired, that you attend every meeting in the event that a member who may be participating in a hearing, that rare emergency, that they can't participate. So, you're saying you're available the third Thursday of every month?
Absolutely.
To come visit. Do you have any concerns, being that you're in the cell industry and that is something that the ZBA does have some responsibility for?
Yeah, I believe that I would probably need to recuse myself from many matters dealing with cell phone towers or our customers, just to make sure that there isn't any conflict of interest or the appearance thereof. I've already disclosed to my company that I applied for this position. I haven't heard back from our ethics board yet, but I don't anticipate there being any problems with me serving, but just that I would probably have to recuse myself from many matters specifically related to that industry.
Okay. Yeah, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just want to thank you for coming forward. I mean, we had three awesome candidates for the Library Trustees and now with Ms. Bush and yourself for the, for the Zoning Board of Appeals. And to be in town for three months and be willing to serve your community, I think is very impressive. So I'll say to you, as I said to the others, I don't know who will be selected tonight, but thank you for your interest. And I see you have checked off that you're interested in other committees. So I'm sure that if, wherever we find a place for someone, we have some really impressive resumes, so thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. My interest is mostly just in being a part of the community and trying to serve in any way I can, so I appreciate that.
Through the chair, we did reach out and have been to the candidates for positions that you appoint, because if, obviously you will have one seat and you have multiple candidates, so rest assured, we've tried to identify potential seats for both the candidates that might fit with their needs if, depending on what happens. Sometimes we have candidates that are willing and want to put in time on multiple committees too, and we can always consider that. But we, it's great, we've been receiving a lot of applicants from new people to town, which is great, just seeing some new faces and new people getting involved. So we're going to do everything we can to find a seat. If we don't have a seat right now, we do have turnover, things happen, people move out of town, so rest assured, we've, we'll be reaching out as, as we are to the library candidates in the morning. We already had it on our schedule to call those candidates tomorrow morning and see where we might be able to fit them in. So, when we have applicants that are enthusiastic and want to get involved, the issue we have right now, honestly, and it's a good issue, we don't have a lot of vacant seats. So we're, a lot of it's just waitlisting to see where there may be a vacancy. We, for a change, seem to have more applications than we have seats right now. So, we're doing our best to try to find spots, can't always do it.
Difficult position for us to be in.
Yeah, can't always find it immediately, but, you know, we do our best.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bertheum.
Looking at your application, what is, one of the things that you also checked off was Finance Committee, and what is your finance background?
So, I've worked with our accounting department for years at the company that I work with. I don't have any specific finance training, but it's, it's just, it was one of the ones that was open, so I clicked it specifically because I knew there was a vacancy. And I just think it would be interesting to be a part of the town's leadership and guidance.
So working through the chair, through, working with your company through budgets or, or you just kind of understood the financing part of it, but, or have you actually worked with budgets and things like that?
I, so I oversee the attorney at our, the in-house attorney who oversees our litigation portfolio, and so I have some limited budget experience, just budgeting for specific matters. It's not a town budget, it's nowhere near it, but, you know, there are instances where we're going to file a lawsuit and we have to understand how much it's going to cost or at least estimate it, approve that budget, make sure that the attorney that we're hiring has some reasonable basis for the estimate, and then trying to make sure that they're actually sticking to that budget and understanding why they've gone over it. So I have that level of experience, but nothing as detailed as like building a budget or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, have you got anything else you'd like to add?
Just that I'm really happy to be here and I appreciate your time tonight.
Well, thank you so much for coming in. Thank you.
Welcome to Auburn.
Yes, and you are in precinct five.
Through the chair, before you bring the next candidate, I do want to just respond to Mr. Carpenter's comment. We did invite the chair of the ZBA, who had indicated he would be here, so I can just imagine something unexpected must have come up, because he was planning on coming. So I hope everything's okay, but he was planning on being here.
Okay. The next one we have is Ms. Kaitlin Bush. Would you come up and join us, please?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, how are you tonight?
And how are you?
Like to just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. I just completed the Citizens Leadership Academy, so that kind of got me introduced to the town, all the different town departments, and it just really made me excited to try to get involved more with the town, stay involved with the town. I moved to Auburn in August of 2017. My husband and I live on Brummar Ave, so we just, we really love Auburn, it's a great community. A lot of our family members live in Auburn as well, so I just wanted to stay involved.
That's awesome. Have you got, is there anything in particular that interests you just to come onto the Zoning Board of Appeals?
I'm an attorney as well, so it seemed like a natural decision, just with the, again, reading laws, interpreting, it's just a part of my daily job, so it just seemed like a natural choice.
Have you ever had the ability to be part of a appeals board of, or have any type of exposure to, you know, what you would be involved with, with the zoning board?
I have watched a couple of, I haven't attended a meeting, but I've watched a few of the meetings on YouTube, so that's basically my only exposure to being part of the appeals board.
Okay. And as Mr. Carpenter had mentioned earlier, have you got the ability to, you know, make the meetings and be able to attend all the meetings, because there may be conflict of interest, there might be absence, there might be anything going on, so that you would have the ability to have the time?
I would, yes.
Okay. Is there anything else you've got in your background that would bring skills, special skills or?
Well, my experience is a little different. I do a lot of litigation, so I interpret different laws from different, I guess, different areas of law, so nothing that's specifically zoning board or zoning areas, but I just, I do have a lot of experience with interpreting different sets of laws to different sets of facts.
Okay, how, you said you mentioned litigation, the zoning board, and it's a member of, you know, a number of people that, were you able to work with a number of people or do you work on your own in litigation?
I work with many different people.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there any other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Bertheum.
So, when you watched the zoning board meetings, did you feel like you were understanding a lot of what was going on, or did you feel like, oh, it's just going to be interesting to kind of get, go and dig in? Yeah, I kind of want to get a feel for what your, what's that?
Motivation.
No, not motivation, but just whether you just feel like this is something that you can step right into. Obviously, whatever boards we've all got on, you have to, there's a certain amount of learning, but.
Right.
What is, what do you feel, you feel like you'd step into it pretty easily or?
I think, I mean, I definitely think there'd be a learning curve, but I think I could pick it up. I usually pick up things pretty quickly, so after experiencing a few of the meetings, I think I could, I'd be able to pick up things quickly.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just say the same thing I said earlier, and thank you for your interest in this. I graduated the first Citizens Leadership Academy, and it really was an eye-opener, and I thank you for your interest in this, your enthusiasm, and whoever we pick tonight, I hope that you'll be willing to serve on in another capacity. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? Yes, Mr. Carpenter.
First, I just want to clarify, my mention of the chairman was more, it's unusual for us to go forward with an interview process without the chair present. It was not to disparage the chair. It was not disparage to the chair, it would suggest that he was derelict in his duty. So I don't want anybody taking any miscues from that. You say you do a lot of litigation.
I do.
Is any of that related to zoning?
It's not, no.
Not that I think that that's necessary. Do you, have you done anything to steal from Mr. Berthium, conservation commission? Have you done anything with wetland litigation?
I haven't.
Anything to do with that? So no issues with recuses?
No, nothing like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody anything else? And you've got the ability to take the time to do what, the time it takes to get in, and it will be additional time with, you know, reading books, reading the laws, understanding the bylaws and how it applies. And I guess I'll turn it over to you to make any last statements or any other comments you wish to make.
I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight and taking the time to interview.
Well, thank you very much for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to also comment, we had three applicants from our Citizens Leadership Academy since we graduated, and that was at June 6th?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, just in June 6th. So hopefully, we're starting to get, again, new people getting involved in the town, learning about the town. And like I said, we do our best to try to find a place where we can place them. It is a good problem to have right now to not have a lot of seats, but again, the seats usually do open up. We really try to fit the skills and experience of the applicant with the best place to potentially put them and give them, and we speak to them and ask if they're willing to serve in other areas. And sometimes we just have a short-term need and sometimes we have a long-term need. So we do have some ideas.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in tonight. We haven't got our third applicant here tonight. I think before we make any decisions as a board, my idea would be to see if we can contact the third one and get an interview, and then we can make a decision from there. I hate to put that at a point where we can't make a decision tonight, but in fairness, I'd like to have the third applicant here to ask the questions, similar to what we've been through here tonight with you. And that's where I'd like to go. So can we approach the third applicant?
Through the chair, we have, we will continue to try. We have been in touch, and we'll try, if, my recommendation would be if we can't get the applicant to come in for the next meeting, you probably want to take a vote at the next meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, Mr. Carpenter.
Can I just suggest that we contact the chairman of the ZBA and ask him if he wouldn't, can find time to get in touch and perhaps give us, come in if we're going to make an appointment? So at least if he can talk to the two applicants we have and raise any questions he may have. Seems that he hasn't had that opportunity. And then perhaps attend our next meeting if that's how the schedule falls, and then he can weigh in at that time.
I believe so, then we should be able to make that decision on July 15th, so that'll be our next meeting. So if that's good with the board, then that's what we will go through and see if we can contact that third applicant. Again, thank you both so much for coming in. Thank you. Okay, for the finance committee. We have Ms. Anne Kavanaugh. She's agreed to be reappointed to the finance committee, and we need a motion here to reappoint Ms. Kavanaugh for a term expiring on June 30th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reappoint Ms. Kavanaugh for a term expiring June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Yeah, a motion's been made in second to reappoint Ms. Kavanaugh for the finance committee to expiring on June 30th, 2022. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do not see Ms. Brennan here for the next item, so if I could recommend, since Sheldon's is here, to take this out of order unless, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think she was planning on being here, so I would just suggest taking Sheldon's next, just in case.
All right. So can I have a motion to move up item 6C for Sheldon Charlie Davidson?
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Is there anybody from Sheldon's here tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening. Would you please identify yourself?
Robert Thompson, the general manager, Sheldon Charlie Davidson.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, before we get started, I would direct you my apology. The meeting, our last meeting, we were here, was very contentious. I take full responsibility for that. People that know me know that if I do wrong, I will call myself on it, and I want to be sure that I extend that to you. We deserve the respect that you deserve. And after saying that, I'd like to continue through, and let's get started with where we are.
I appreciate the apology. The gentleman that was here last week is not with us at this meeting, obviously, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first off, you are here for, let's see, dates revised to, let's see, 6/29, 7/20, 8/17, and 9/21. We have received a letter from the police chief, but you've also had a, well, before we get to that, have you had a chance to meet with the DCG?
Yes, we met with them last.
Monday.
Last Monday.
Okay.
About revisions to where, where the band will be set up, the direction in which that music will be played. The DEP doing a study on what decibel levels is, what decibel levels are reasonable and accepted. We've done our own decibel readings throughout, both morning, noon, and night at Route 20, with the band, without the band, during traffic, without traffic, with the business open, the whole thing. And we're coming up with readings across the board that start somewhere in the 75-decibel range and top out at about 105 decibels without a band. So we're doing our best to ensure that the, that the noise complaints are met with, you know, an understanding of what, what we can do to help. However, certain levels of, I give certain levels of expectation, when I do a decibel reading of Route 20 at 5 or 6 o'clock in the afternoon, and it reads 101 decibels, and then we have a conversation about 50, you know, is it 50 above expected? You know, I'm trying, I'm going to do my best to ensure that.
I think that was one of the concerns we had the last time, is this level of sound?
Yeah.
I know decibels, it says over 86, and I better stop covering my ears.
So I can.
That's what, you know, the industry says, but how you apply it and how it's measured is altogether different. So it's something that we have to look into and.
Correct.
I'm not, I'm an engineer, but I don't understand.
Yeah.
Other than, OSHA tells me if it goes over 80, you better cover your ears.
Yeah. I can tell you Route 20 at 6 o'clock in the afternoon is over 80 decibels, without question.
Okay.
Based on multiple decibel readings. Now, keeping in mind, DEP has a very specific decibel read that they want to use, they just haven't come out and done it, but I promise you, it's going to be well over 80 at 6 o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Goodrich, I need to jump in. I sent the board an email earlier, just to let you know, some of the information we've been finding out literally right up until the time the meetings start tonight, and we're continuing to look at it. The board had asked me last time for a recommendation on decibels. I couldn't make a recommendation like you. It's not, it's not my field, I don't know what's the appropriate recommendation, but we did get a standard decibel chart. It wasn't from DEP, this was just something we looked at for DCG purposes, because we didn't have one from DEP, just to have some basis of where do you start? And just, for instance, an office, an office with nobody talking in it, you know, just normal office noises, an air conditioner running, a coffee machine going, is a 50. The person at DEP who had a conversation with Darlene Coyle, who's our public health director, told Darlene that the conversation she was having with her on the phone was a 65. So we also learned that to set appropriate or acceptable decibel levels, DEP does have a noise pollution policy. It's been in place for several years, it's still in place. And they set what they would term as maybe nuisance noise, or noise that needs to have some type of action taken, whether it needs to be curbed, at 10 decibels above ambient. Ambient has to be therefore calculated. So to Mr. Thompson's point and to your point, ambient is going to be calculated very differently for different properties in town. Ambient on Route 20 is going to be a lot higher than ambient behind Town Hall. So once ambient is calculated, then 10 decibels above ambient. And ambient basically is, is what is the standard noise at a given time of day. And it is different in the morning, it's different at night, it's different at midnight. So DEP said it's a very complicated issue. They have, they're working with Darlene Coyle, and the reason for that is, under DEP regulations, I don't know if it's a regulation, but under their practices, they work with local boards of health. So if there's a sound, a noise pollution issue that's reported to DEP, DEP tries to work with the local board of health to try to address it. So Darlene Coyle is the health director. So she has been working with DEP over the last couple of weeks to see if we can get DEP to come out and help us establish what ambient is, using their equipment, which has been calibrated. So we have a call into them, I was hoping we'd know by the end of today, and I'm sorry, we don't know yet, but we're trying to see if we can get the equipment for this Saturday's event, if this Saturday's event is approved, because they could give us the equipment, Darlene could go out, the police chief has offered to go out Saturday as well, and listen for himself, not checking levels, just listening to what he hears there, as well as some of the other locations where some of the complaints have come in. So I think what the chair was referring to is, we don't have a, a letter from the police chief, but the police chief did contact me and let me know that, his recommendation, and he did meet with Mr. Thompson the day after your meeting, he went out to, to talk to them, to see if we could come to, my understanding, some kind of plan as to how to handle the complaints.
Through the chair, if you don't mind, I've met Chief Salukis several times. As a matter of fact, he's actually come down to the dealership. We've done a walk-around to both understand where the band is going to be, where, which direction it will be faced, to mitigate as much sound going across Route 20 as possible, where the alcohol will be served, what the expectation is as far as the roped-off area, and we've done that as well. You know, and we, he did come out at the tail end of our event, at the end of Saturday, which, you know, based on some last-minute changes, was not as busy as we'd like it, but the goal was to get through it and show that the town, show the town that we are trying to be as, I guess, compatible as possible.
So through the chair, to that point, the police chief did tell me, and I just want to tell the board, I put in an email to you tonight, may not have had a chance to read it, but the police chief couldn't be here this evening, but he did say that his recommendation is to go forward with a permit for at least the event on Saturday. And giving him the opportunity to hear it for himself, he'd like to hear, he understands sound travels, there's different places in town that you may hear it more so than other places, he'd like to hear it for himself. Darlene Coyle, hopefully, will have some equipment from DEP to go out and actually set that kind of a level, if that's what we want to do. DCG's recommendation was to go no more than 10 decibels above ambient, but again, hard to enforce that, we don't know what ambient is, we were trying to be proactive and hope that we would know by then. So I also want to point out that Sheldon's did comply with all of the recommendations of DCG, and actually had made some of their own recommendations, but we talked about moving the speakers to a different location, facing a different location, which is what Mr. Thompson was talking about, to try to buffer that sound, so maybe it's not heading in a certain way and picking up and carrying to the top of the hill as it has been. And also asked them to switch their events from Friday evening, which they'd already switched once, to a Saturday, and they're certainly willing to do that. Also came up with a floor plan, full understanding now that they know with the liquor license, if issued, one-day beer and wine covers a certain area, and all alcohol has to be consumed within that area, not just served in that area, but has to remain in that area. So my understanding from DCG was that they felt that Sheldon's was doing everything they could to respond to the board's concerns. I know at the last meeting, the board voted to have Mrs. Goodrich be the liaison for DCG, so she relayed all of the concerns on behalf of the board to me, which were shared with DCG, and I believe there were five, if not six, concerns. We met and went over them all. DCG addressed all of them with Sheldon's, and the result is in your recommendations here. I believe that, if I can, that the concerns that Mrs. Goodrich had brought were the time of day, obviously the noise level, that was number one, the noise level, the times of day, the location of where the alcohol was, I'm sorry, there were five or six. And anyway, they've all been, yeah, and they've all been addressed through DCG.
Mrs. Goodrich, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, I received the bulk of the complaints, because I am up on the hill, as they say. So on Saturday, I did receive, initially I would word it as three complaints, and upon follow-up with the residents, I would say I received one complaint. So I did receive one complaint via email. I forwarded to the town manager, as well as Chief Salukis, and I believe that's when Chief Salukis contacted you, it was a resident up on the hill. Another neighbor contacted me initially about the noise, you know, Sheldon's is playing music again. So I remember specifically what it was, but I felt it was worthy to take a ride up to that home and talk to them. And she said, well, no, it's not bothering us, I just wanted to make you aware that the noise was, the music was playing again. I said, well, they have, they have a permit, and we had agreed, there were residents here who didn't have an issue with the Saturday music. And a very similar conversation with the second resident, that, you know, I think the concern or the red flag was, oh, they're playing music again, until they realized that they had a permit. And certainly, everyone agreed that the Saturday is not as concerning at all. Just wanted to reassure and said, are we going to have to deal with this on Friday nights again? And I said, well, I can only speak for myself, and I was vocal that night, that I would support a Saturday, but not a Friday night. And I'll be honest with you, when I initially got the first call, rare, but I was home on Saturday, and I was making some notes here, you know, I was at home doing routine activities, be it laundry, cooking, the TV was on in the background, I did not hear any of the music. I stepped outside and I could hear it, but it wasn't like we had heard in the past on the Friday night, that boom, 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 the loud music. I think, you know, it's daytime noise, whether it's the traffic on Route 20, the motorcycles, the, you know, the lawn mowers, I think my ride on tractor probably makes more noise than the noise that was coming from Route 20 at that time during the day. So I don't, I would like the town manager and the chief to follow up specifically with this resident. He has contacted us every single event, and I think it would be worthy to, to monitor the sound from his area and see just what's happening. But I just want to be clear, I had initially said I received three complaints, but I think it was more one complaint and then two people making me aware that Sheldon's was playing music and just kind of.
I appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
Anybody do anything else? Yes, Mr. LaLibby.
I'll just say that I attended the event for roughly 15 to 20 minutes, spoke to both of you, actually, and then afterwards took a ride up on the hill to see if I could hear anything. There were a couple of other people with me. I was wondering if I was going to get any calls about this strange person parked in front of people's houses, and then standing there for a little bit, but nothing like that that I know of. I couldn't hear much going on, so I think the volume was acceptable, and I called Robbie afterwards to let him know that. So I have no problem moving forward with another Saturday event and then seeing how things go.
Well, just by the sounds of it, it looks like there's been a lot of corrections, and you've addressed a lot of things here, and it just, again, it goes back to our last meeting where it was very back and forth, and it was just, you know, we were locking horns, and it just seems like you've worked well with the DCG. It's just some of the comments made here tonight, it looks like we're getting into that path, that we're able to work together on this.
I do have a statement or a question, actually, and I had asked last time if there was a complaint, or even the one individual that's unhappy, because my goal is to have nothing but a perfect interaction with us in the community, because the better that interaction gets, the longer that goes, the more leeway that's going to be given. Listen, this one Friday down the line might be a little louder than normal, but I promise it'll be that one time. And maybe that happens, maybe it doesn't. But why do those, why do those things not come to the dealership? Why am I not made aware of those? Like, for instance, Chief Salukis didn't contact me till 3:55, for instance. The band had been playing since 12:30 or 1:00. I didn't get a phone call until five minutes before the band broke down. At that point. At that point, just stop, you know, there's, there's no point, continue going.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich, go ahead.
If I just can respond to that.
Sure.
So I believe I received the initial email, um, about 2:00 PM. I forwarded it to the town manager, and I don't expect her to respond immediately on the weekend. Received the, um, the other call, and I took a ride and, and resolved that discussion. So, I didn't actually speak with the chief until probably 2:30-ish, quarter or three, somewhere in there, and he said he was coming down Route 20 and he would, he would stop and chat with you. So, and the gentleman who sent the email, um, and, you know, the town manager has the email, I just think, um, to paraphrase him, he's frustrated, he feels that he has made complaints in the past and no one's listening, so he's no longer calling, but he did send it to me. So that's a timeline on Saturdays, this past Saturday.
Through the chair, it, I obviously want that individual to be, to be comfortable and to be happy with what's going on. Chief Salukis, as I look at my phone, contacted me at 3:46, left a voicemail at 3:47. You guys are more than welcome to call me at the dealership, you know, firsthand, you get an email, you, however that goes, I don't...
And I know you offered your cell phone number last time, off air, I will tell you cell phone number.
Um, it's, uh, you know, I want these, I don't, as much as I enjoy these interactions, I don't want to have to be every week. I'd like to be able to go back to, we've approved all your spots for the summer. So, yeah, even, even one, I'd like to know so that I can correct it right away.
I believe Mrs. Jacobson is going to work on, with the chief on that specific resident complaint, so they'll, they'll be in contact with you about that.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Mr. Bertheu.
I'd like to make a motion. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the, uh, June 29th, uh, date from 1 to 4, um, and that would be for the one day outdoor entertainment license. Do we want to do those separately?
Yeah, I believe we do.
Okay, so the one day, uh, out day, outdoor entertainment license, um, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled, said license is subject to all conditions stated upon them. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
A second for discussion.
Okay. Uh, the motion's been made, and just to be clear, it's just for Saturday, June 29th? Or is that for the July 20th, August 17th, and the tentative of September 21st?
Uh, the, the motion has read through the chair. I, I just think that, and I apologize that you do have to keep coming back, um, but just that we, it seems like we have all of these mechanics, mechanisms in, in motion, and so, you know, we might as well hear from the chief, from the, um, Ms. Coyle, um, just to, to see what, what their feedback is, so, that's why, um, I think that, I don't want to belabor it, I want to get right to it, I want you to have your event, and, um, that way we can, um, you know, we'll get the feedback with whatever happens. I don't believe you're going to be able to please everybody, you know, I appreciate your effort to try to do that. I don't think it's going to happen, um, but I think that, uh, whatever noise between 1:00 and 4:00 o'clock on a Saturday, um, and, you know, being, providing that you're being respectful and you're, you're, uh, taking the, um, the comments, suggestions, calls, and everything that you've been doing, uh, I just think that we should, we should not belabor this and just give you the, uh, the approval.
Thank you. And Mrs. Goodrich, for discussion?
Just a quick clarification, um, I know that this says 1 to 4, um, and I do follow you on Facebook, I just want to, I saw that on one of them, you had it, um, 1 to 6. I just want to be clear that this event with the music is 1 to 4.
I'm Jerelyn, the marketing and events manager. This isn't specifically our event, it was a memorial motorcycle ride that outgrew their prior venue and asked to utilize our facility because of the sheer growth of the venue. So I will have to go back and double check. They purchased the band and the timeframes. If anything, I would like it to be 1 to 5, because they're going on a motorcycle ride from 11:30 to approximately 12:30 or 1:00, and they're going to come back and have lunch, and the band's not going to start until 2:00, so they probably paid for the band for three hours, I'm assuming, as we all usually do.
Okay, and that, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
That's why I want this clarification, I mean, the, as the motion stands right now, it's 1 to 4, um, certainly I'm willing to approve, um, three hours, um, I just want to be very clear on the time, because I don't want, um, I, I don't think we're ready for a 1 to 6 band, if you're, if you're asking for a modification from 2 to 5, we need to know that, and, and I don't know if you can look at your website or whatever you need to do, but we need, we need to be sure on the times. You know, because if we vote, if, if we, if we vote to approve a license from 1 to 4, well, because the band has started late at 2, that doesn't mean you can just go till 5:00. So I just want, I'm, I'm, I, I saw your Facebook, I just want to be, be sure, so that you're not in the position of having a band either starting late or needing to stop early because you were late. Just want clarification.
If you're, I don't, through the chair, I don't have clarification, unfortunately. Um, at this moment, it's a memorial ride for Officer Clardy, so, if you're looking for a specific timeframe, you're asking me to corral 350 police officers in an exact area, and per Chief Salukis, when we had the DCG meeting, we explained this exact scenario to him, and he kind of giggled and laughed and said, "Good luck with that." So, although I would love to tell you exactly how it's going to go, I'm going to have 350 police officers riding to, uh, to help support Officer Clardy's family at this moment, so, you know, I don't have an answer for you. If it goes, if it goes till 6:00 and I get in trouble, I'm sorry, I, I don't, it's 350 police officers for memorial ride, I don't, I don't have a better answer for you.
What I can say and clarify through the chair, if you don't mind, is through the DCG, since we had changed or been asked to change our Friday night bike nights from 5:00 to 8:00 to Saturday, 1:00 to 4:00, we were all just kind of using that timeframe because of those other three dates were all 1 to 4, when they were speaking about this specific memorial ride, it just smoothly went into the 1 to 4, where I didn't interrupt and say, "Hey, wait, the band's probably going to start at 2:00 when they're all settled in and back from the ride and having lunch," and go for three hours. We didn't really talk about that one extra hour. If I can have that one extra hour, then I can probably assume that we can stop the band at 5:00.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
And, and, you know, and this is why I don't want to have this back and forth, certainly we're not, we're not looking to put a damper on a, on a memorial ride for a deceased trooper. Certainly, we're not looking to do that, but if we issue a permit from 1 to 4, and we get noise complaints at 5:00, that they're coming down there, they have to shut you down, and I'm not looking to do that. That's why, that's why I'm asking you that, I'm looking to help you, not hurt you.
Through the chair, I completely understand. I just don't have, I don't have an answer. If it's 2 to 5, if it's 1 to 4, I, to be completely honest, I have no intention of doing any event after this event. I, like I said, I enjoy coming down here, but this has been, the more I've interacted at the dealership, the more of a challenge I realize this is. We've made accommodations, um, at other parts of the state to do these events, and unfortunately, riders are going to come back down Route 20 and the noise is going to happen anyways. Um, it's a challenge to do this every week, you know, and, and this ride specifically is for a state trooper who was barracks in this area. His patrol area was this area. So I understand that noise is an issue, I get it, but every now and then, in the effort for a memorial ride for an officer, a state trooper that patrolled this area, don't you think an exception should be made to an exact timeframe? And if not, then maybe I'm going to get in trouble on this one last event. I want to work with you, I really do, and I hope this last event showed you that, but to me, this, this is outside the realm of, we're going to do 1 to 4. This is a very charitable thing, and maybe you guys disagree, but it, that's, that's how, that's passionately how I feel about that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we're not, please don't make us the bad guys. I'm the one that's asking for, potentially to modify this, this, amend this motion, so that we can make it a longer, um, event.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Mr. Carpenter.
I guess my point is, I expect anybody who comes into the town of Auburn to respect our rules.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't ask you to make this out, you made it out. So, again, I can give you a permit, and I'm, and I'm happy to give you one last try, only to gather information, because, to be honest, you're not showing me the attitude that I think you're, you're trying to present. And with all due respect, I expect, when I get pulled over and the policeman gives me a ticket or tells me that I need to manage the speed that I'm on, I expect them to respect the town of Auburn and the times that we set. So, we have a lot of charitable events for a lot of things, and every single one of them obeys the rules. We can't just sit here and say, "Okay, 1 to 8:00, 1 to 9:00, 1 to 10:00," depending on whatever event you want. So, if you're going to host these events, you need to be clear what you're asking of us. So, to me, I came in 1 to 4, not thrilled, but willing to listen, um, and, you know, willing to give you one last shot to try and work this out, but if, if it's just going to be, "Well, you know, we've done everything that we can," you know, the residents of the town also deserve to be able to enjoy their property and to be able to do what they want to do on a Saturday without having to worry about whether three people on the hill think it's okay, whether 10 people think it's on the hill is okay. There's a history with another business on this street that went down this road not too many years ago. So the people who've lived on the hill, who've experienced that, are thrilled to be experiencing it again. So, I know you're new to the town and new to the community, but, you know, they've, they've dealt with the noise for two years, um, and I think at some point, people need to be respectful of the town. If you're asking for a permit from 1 to 4, that's the opposite. That means everybody leaves, there's no music, there's nothing. If you want 1 to 5, that's fine, you're filling out the application, not me. I'm not telling you, you have to do it from, you can apply 5 to 8:00 every Friday. You have, and I'm going to tell you, I'm not going to give you that permit, not with my vote, uh, because of the experience I've had.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Bertheu.
Through the chair, um, so, your, your feeling is that that music is not going to start until 2:00?
Correct.
Okay, and, and you're pretty certain about that? So, and, and you're also pretty certain that bands, uh, normally go about three hours?
Correct.
So, I would like to amend my motion to, instead of 1 to 4, be 2 to 5:00, um, and that should allow for the later time, the three hours, still early enough in the evening that, uh, I, I think that we can still gather our data, um, and, and I think that, um, that would work out okay. So I'll amend my motion from 1 to 4 to 2 to 5:00 PM on that day.
Is there a second?
I seconded that, so I'll approve, I'll amend my second.
You will...
He amended his motion, I had originally seconded it.
And so you will second it for the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? I will turn to you and ask you if you've got anything else.
No, sir.
Okay. I will only make the comment that, let's work with this.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, be no other comments or concerns, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
It is on you, sir.
I, it's on both of us, and we're going to get there.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. And, by the way, um...
I believe there's a...
Oh yes, the beer and wine also, uh, we have to do the beer and wine also, so, um, is there any...
Thank you.
Questions? I see that on the back of the application here that we do have alcohol intervention method certified, so it's, we have a, uh, person for tip certification?
Seven, to be exact.
Many.
Seven. Okay, I've only got, uh, just what we have here in front of us, I don't have any others, so...
I will.
You do have seven, and they have been told?
They've been breached as to...
They're waiting for us to go home tonight and tell them that we got the certificate so they can work.
Yep.
Okay.
Through the chair, can we just make sure that we have a copy?
Of course.
Of files, of all of them? I know, right now, we just have a couple, but any time, without...
Sure.
You don't have to come back for, to learn this, but every, every time you have extra people that aren't already listed, just give us a call and get it to Rachel.
Okay.
Thanks.
Is there a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So, on our, on our packet, um, it says the time would be 1 to 4, and I apologize, I, in, uh, looking over Mr. LaLiberty's shoulder, there is an application that wasn't in my packet, so I wasn't sure about, um, what he was referencing, and it does say, um, this was in our packet, correct? Except for mine, um, the 10 to 7. So I have a question on the hours of operation for the liquor license, um, where it says on our agenda 1 to 4, yet on this application, it's 10 to 7.
Through the chair, I would just make sure we recognize, we get often these applications filled out, they believe that that's the hours of their business operation.
Correct.
So that's the hours of their business operation?
And so what, what, I just want to be clear as to what time we're looking for, um, the beer and wine license, since, since it seems to be an extended...
It's an all-day event, through the chair, it's 9 to 5:00. That's the event, that's when they're arriving, and that's when the music's shutting off.
So I think there's, if I can be clear, just so I understand too, so there's two different things, you, your beer and wine license is a one-day beer and wine license for a specific area. I don't know that you have put times before on your beer and wine license, but you have put times on the entertainment, because it was the noise that was the concern. So I believe what you're saying is, on the entertainment license, the band will only be there from 2 to 5:00, but do I hear you right, the event is from 9 to 6:00?
Mm-hmm.
And so you would need the, you would be serving alcohol from what point, not certainly from 9:00?
Correct. They're certainly not going to drink before the ride.
So what, so what time would that be?
So when they come back from the ride, and they all get settled down and start having lunch and attending the beer van, it will probably be, the first rider may arrive back at 12:30.
Okay. Mr. Bertheu?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we approve a one-day beer and wine license for, uh, Saturday, June 29th, um, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled, said license is subject to all conditions stated upon them, failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Have you, um, just a little, we can clarify, have you got a timeframe on that?
No, it's a one-day beer and wine license. I think that's what we just discussed, was it's a one-day beer and wine.
It is a one-day beer and wine license, you can still say what time you want it to start?
I'm not putting it in mind, I, I feel that I'm not, they're, they're adults and they know when to, so, if, if somebody wants to second my motion and then discuss it, I'll amend it if they want to put some hours in.
A second for discussion.
Okay. Mr. LaLiberty, discussion?
Um, the only question that I have, um, through the chair to Sheldon's, is, when I attended the event, the gate was, um, pretty open, but there wasn't that many people coming in, um, so it wasn't that hard to contain. Uh, I was wondering if the gate would still be that length? You had mentioned then that it can be closed, be a little bit smaller, so I didn't know what the plan was there.
Through the chair, uh, we will, hadn't thought about it, to be honest, but that is a movable gate, I can close that to a, to a standard 30-inch doorway if needed, um, and we have purchased more than a dozen no alcohol beyond this sign, beyond this point signs. One of those tip-certified individuals will be placed at that, at that gate, so that no individual leaves that area.
That was my only question, to make sure that it could close, what, the number of people you expecting them?
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter?
Through the chair, to the town manager, are you making a recommendation that we assign a time? Is that, are you bringing this to...
I'm asking, because I think Mrs. Goodrich was looking for clarification on, how long is this event, and how long are you serving alcohol? I think...
I was, only because I didn't receive this in my packet, so I was just glancing at it briefly right now.
Yep, so I think, um, and I could be wrong, I don't think you've put times on other ones, although I, did you have one, uh, an approval at Lemansky Park that was for certain?
I don't believe so.
Time for a race?
Typically for all.
I think it meant...but they may have also come in with a requested time on that one versus others come in for just a one-day license.
All right. So, the motion's been made and seconded for a one-day beer and wine. And it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now, 6D, we don't have anybody here. So, we'll move on to 6D. We have gift acceptances and we have several here. First, we have the Auburn Fast Pitch Softball at $1,200 and this is designed to an AED machine at Lemansky Softball Field.
I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude and that it'll let it be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. We have from Braley Wellington, the amount of $2,500 for an AED package. That's the Automatic Emergency Defibrillator.
Make a motion we accept with gratitude and that it'll let it be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have Cook Professional Resources Incorporated doing business as safety trainers for $2,500 and it's for another automatic defibrillator package to include the unit, carry case for outdoors.
Make a motion we accept with gratitude and that it'll let it be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. From Seaman Engineering Corp., $2,500 for AED units.
Motion to accept with gratitude and that it'll let it be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. From Home Depot, goods and labor for animal control shelter shed. And it's approximately $14,000 and it's for the animal shelter shed.
Make a motion that we accept with gratitude and that it'll let it be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. From Steven and Mary McDonough, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U., $20 to the Auburn Fire Department Gift Account.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? From Shane and Nancy Morn in memory of Carolyn Dunne U. for $50 to the Fire Department Gift Account.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? From Steven and Mary Bricker in memory of Carolyn Dunne U. for $50 to the Fire Department Gift Account.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And from John and Denise Booton, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U., $25 to the Fire Department Gift Account.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Steven and Deborah, I believe it's...is it Koratski? K-O-R? Is that how I'm reading that?
Yeah, it looks like it. Koratski.
I'm gonna say Steven and Deborah Koratski, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U., for $50 to the Fire Department Gift Account.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Frederick and Karen Stanley, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U., $25 to the Fire Department Gift Account.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. The Berthews, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U., $30 to the Fire Department Gift Account.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Suzie and Tad Ziegler, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U., $50 to the Fire Department Gift Account.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Harry and Jean Johnson, in memory of Carolyn Dunne U., $25 to the Fire Department Gift Account.
Motion to accept with gratitude and extend our sympathies to the family and appreciation for them identifying the Fire Department Gift Account as a recipient of their debt.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And the last we have here is Lori Ann Copeland for an air conditioner from the Treasurer Collector's Office. It's an air conditioner worth $75 to be put into the Treasurer Collector's window in the office. And I guess I'll ask Ms. Jacobson about this one. This is the...
She's donating an air conditioner to put in the office?
Okay.
Before we can accept it, we wanted the board to be aware of it and accept it.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you very much. We have no proclamations in front of us?
Excuse me, Ms. Chair, do you wanna go back and add this? I'm not sure how the board wants to handle the item from the Housing Authority.
Okay. Yeah, can we go back to item 6B? Now, this is vote on acceptance of housing in urban development. It's a 2019 Capital Fund Program Formula Grant to carry out work activities under Public Housing Authority's five-year capital plan. And I'll...Ms. Jacobson, have you got some information on this or...
Through the chair, I don't have a lot of information on this. It is a Housing Authority item. We were asked to put it on. We did ask the Housing Authority to have a representative here to answer any questions. I can't speak for them. I can just tell you that we did check this when it came up last year as to why the board would have to approve of something that...for an authority that it doesn't oversee. You know, they're a separate authority legislatively created. We just weren't sure why the Board of Selectmen was required to sign off on something and what would be the responsibilities of the board, because you don't oversee these of the funds. So, it was a little concerning that you had to take that vote. We did check it. It is under Mass General Law 121B, Section 11. Okay? It does identify that it's a vote of the Board of Selectmen. We asked why it came in last year as a board vote and what had been done previously. And when we went back and looked, it had appeared that the town clerk previously had been signing it. So, I don't know if the law changed at some point, but at some point, the Housing Authority came back to us and said it actually has to be the Board of Selectmen. So, this would be the second year that they would be coming in for this signature on this that's required for them to get, I believe, their CIP dollars. But honestly, I don't know how they monitor it and they spend it. That's why we had asked them to commit.
And I agree. I don't know why we sign something we have no control over and I know it is in the state law, but it's...we have no...nothing to say about anything that's done in the Housing Authority and yet they ask us to accept monies from a capital fund. Mr. Berthew?
Well, I did take a look at it and I will not sign anything or approve anything, whether I have control over it or not, but if somebody's not even willing to come and explain this to me, basically, I'm seeing duplication after duplication after duplication. So, I know if I were on that committee, I'd have a problem with it. So, I personally will just say that, I don't know if you wanna table it or whatever, I will not sign anything to approve that looks like this.
Okay. Is there any other comments? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I know this came before us last year and it is Mass General Law, but it is DHCD who requires them to have this paperwork and who maintains the paperwork. And so, I'm just wondering if we could...I haven't thought this through yet, either draft a letter or reach out to DHCD and ask what the expectation is, why, you know, is it just a simple sign-off from the Board of Selectmen? Are we reviewing it? Is there an expectation that we actually have a meeting together to discuss this? I mean, I agree with Mr. Berthew, we're signing off on this, you know, would he point out windows and roof each year?
Would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we contact DHCD and get an explanation as to why the Board of Selectmen signs off on this. I want the motion to be clear. Hold on. Why the Board of Selectmen signs off on this and also why it was accepted from the town clerk for years.
Second that motion.
Was that clear enough, Sharon? Thank you.
You have that, Sharon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do we want the motion to table this?
Um, I believe we should. We could table that and we could put it on for the next meeting or whatever meeting comes up, but we'll table that.
I'll make a motion that we table item 6B and ask the manager's office just to reach out to Ms. Brennan and apprise her of what action we've taken tonight, so that she's fully aware of the board, maybe aware.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Volunteer recognition event, September 16th under...excuse me, 6F. And Mr. Cuffin?
Yes, so this was basically to set a date for it. We do have the subcommittee. I don't know if all members still want to serve on the subcommittee, so they should...this was just to set a date so that we could begin planning as a committee. So, that was the reason I asked the chair to put it on, just so that we would have some direction from the board.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we set the date for the volunteer recognition event for September 16th from 6 to 8 p.m. Second. In the Board of Selectmen's room.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Mr. LaLiberty, you second that? Okay. Any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And to the town manager's items, the Emergency Management Director. Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, first of all, I just want to thank Mark Moss, who's been Emergency Management Director for the past few years, who is resigning from that particular position. He's done a great job. He put a lot of time and effort into this. He is leaving in great shape for the next Emergency Management Director. I know our current board chair was Emergency Management Director, followed by the late Fire Chief Bell Hummer, then Mark Moss, who was a retired lieutenant in the police department. And he's just done a great job. It's been a pleasure to work with him. We'll miss working with him. And I just wanna thank him. On the positive side, we are very excited that Eric Odison, who is a former captain in the Fire Department and happens to be our current Board of Health Chair, has agreed to be the next Emergency Management Director. And as you all know, it really makes sense to try to have someone who's been in either public safety, either police or fire, is a huge benefit to this position, 'cause they already understand the command structure, how our emergency systems are in place. So, Eric will be walking into the role, understanding how we run emergency management here in town. He will have to learn a lot about the...on the grant side of it, but I told him not to worry. You know, most of the grants, I write them anyway on the emergency management. Eddie oversees the financial management of it. I do the...I write the grants. We work a lot with CERT and other members of the community to identify what our needs are, which will be a next item on it. So, Eric will really...I think his focus is going to be the SEP Plan, which is the Local Emergency Management Plan. I think that was one of the goals that you had for me to work on that this year. We are working on it. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with MEMA to talk about that plan, actually. It's massive. It's huge. Even though it's all fitting on a very small flash drive, when it's printed out, it's a huge document, but it's gonna be a good plan. So, Eric's gonna be key in guiding us into that plan. So, I wanna welcome Eric and again, just thank Mark.
Thank you. Under 7B, the 2018 Emergency Management Performance, the EMPG Competitive Grant, and to vote to author...accept, authorize, expend the funds up to $10,000. Ms. Jacobson?
Yes, through the chair. At the last meeting, you had approved us to apply for EMPG funds, I think in the amount up to $4,500. That's a formula-based grant and that's the 2019. That one is coming up. I was not sure when the deadline for submission was gonna be and I didn't wanna risk it because you weren't meeting every week, so I believe...I'll find out tomorrow, but I believe that grant, they haven't set the date yet. It's probably gonna be due around September. That's when it usually is. This grant is different. This is MEMA and FEMA have taken the emergency EMPG grant funds that were not used by other communities. We use all ours. We use it for code red. Some communities don't finish their project or they finish their project and they came in less than they expected it to come in. Those discretionary funds then are put into another pot and it's the 2018 funds that were not utilized. And there's, I believe it's $280,000 available statewide competitive. You can apply for up to $10,000. It's very strict on what you can apply for. I don't have...it is due this Sunday, so this coming Sunday. I'm meeting tomorrow with the MEMA rep to go over our application. We have a couple of ideas of what we wanted to apply for, but he wanted to meet with me first and that couldn't take place until tomorrow. So, I can tell you that it has to meet the requirements. Our preference was to go for equipment because equipment is something that once you have, you always have. It's a one-time need. The MEMA representative thought that maybe perhaps that might not be as competitive, that they're really trying to focus on local emergency planning and strategies, so it might actually tie better in with our SEP Plan that I just mentioned that we're working on anyway. He may be suggesting that we apply for the funds to get a consultant to come in and help us with the SEP Plan. So, I just wanna let the board know ahead of time. That is one of my goals for this year. If we go with this grant and we have a consultant, it may not be completed by January. He said sometimes these things take a couple of years. I was hoping we'd get it done, but that's an option also. So, I'll find out tomorrow what we're gonna apply for and I'll let you know, but I'm gonna have to get it all done this week.
Okay. Okay.[1564.41]